Yes, that's probably.
I'd like to call the meeting forward. I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, we're five years here. We're gonna start with an emotion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. I'll make a motion to the agenda.
I'll say it.
We have a motion to the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. That motion passes. Uh, we have no one signed up for open forum tonight, so we will move on to communications. Our Director of Business Services, Robin Hoxford-Fortson, will talk about enrollment and then a monthly update.
Thank you ma'am chair, members of the board. Enrollment? For the first time I can say our enrollment is stable. The line goes straight this time. So we were looking, and actually, I took the enrollment last week and it actually went up two students. This week it brings it back down, but it's stable straight across. So, for the first time I think this year, I can say it's doing that. Uh, we're going to the monthly. Monthly update, and this is still the original budget. I am gonna present the revised budget to you next, in a few minutes here. But this is still showing the original budget. In, in the, in the revised budget, you'll see that the biggest change is gonna be in the community ed funds. And that's where, because you'll see some of them are at, almost at 100% already. So, um, no big changes on here. You can see that our general fund is showing our revenues over expenditures at this point. And they're higher than last year, so that's a, that's a good thing right now. If you come go down to food service. Um, this is a plant, we're purposely spending down that fund balance on equipment. So you, we're always gonna see our expenses over our revenue in the fund, in the food service fund this year. Then here you can see community service. Revenue is exceeding our expenses right now, so that's what we wanted to do. So, we will revise that budget a little bit to bring that closer to actual. So, nothing real exciting this month, but we're, we're just running where we're supposed to be right now.
I think this is an exciting run.
Well, it's not a lot of signing, but I think, yeah. Maybe no, no big news is good news, so. Unless there's any questions from anyone.
Does anyone have questions?
Oh, I have a question. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we'll go to the school report, but before I let him talk, I just wanted to say, I got to go to our town, um, the performance of Community Ed. And Catherine, Gabe, I don't think you read that off.
I was.
Okay, I wanna ask you. Um, we're, and it, it was just so well done, and I'm just always so impressed by the production. So I enjoyed it so much, thank you guys, you listen, it was just lovely.
Thank you.
Alright, so now I'll let you guys go, whoever would like to go first.
You have the most.
You have the most.
You got a laundry, yes.
Okay, alright.
I have it on here, so wait up, Ramon.
Okay.
Okay. Hello everyone. Um, so last, last board meeting, none of us were able to make it because we were at variety show. So I guess that's what we'll talk about first. Um, so last, not last month, um.
It was last month, yeah, I was gonna say.
It was last month. Last month, uh, we had the variety show. Um, I think it went very well. I know when I gave my report to you, I talked a little bit about it, but I think the overall show went very well. We had 29 acts, including Ja- J- Jazz and Stage Choir. Um, and it was honest, it like, you get to see a lot of different people. You know, that's what I like about it, is you get to see those people who maybe have a secret talent that they don't quite share. But we had some really cool acts that we don't usually see within the music department. Um, and then, if anybody wasn't there to see it, there is a video available on YouTube at Shisago Lakes TV. So it is there as well. Um, next, the student council state convention that we went to on April 4th through the 6th. This is a convention that was hosted in, at Hibbing High School this year. We started going to this last year, and honestly, I hope it stays for however long student council lasts here at high school. Um, it's a very unique and special opportunity for student leaders to go to and kind of experience like different types of leadership from different areas of the state. So you get people who have, who are from areas of less population than us, and then you get people who are from quite larger populations. So you kinda get to mix and see like what compares and what doesn't. So, we got to like, we got to have these like tables where you would meet with a bunch of different people from different schools, and then they would have a sheet of different topics. You compare, contrast what you do at your school. A lot of the times it's similar because, like, great minds think alike. But then you also get to see like, oh, this school maybe has a little bit more opportunity to do this than others based off of population and refunding. And then, these schools are less fortunate to do that. So you kinda get to see, and then if you're like one of those schools that maybe hasn't tried one of those things, you can ask around. How do you do this? How can we start it? So honestly, this brings a lot of new things to our school, and also just kind of builds the confidence of our student leaders at our school. And also as, like, somebody who has seen our program before, we've gone to the state conventions and after, it's honestly a great bonding opportunity for our council as well. I know that, we went to Cragins earlier this year, which is like a smaller version of this, but still pretty big. And you, our council from there got to know each other a lot more, so we were more efficient throughout the year. So I think it's a great opportunity to get to know not only people within your council, but also people from other councils. Um, and then also while we were there, I received a scholarship from the state of Minnesota for student council, so that's one of the reasons I was able to be there. And then my co-president, William Walker, got an award for being the division president for our division. So we were there. Um, but then, overall that was a great weekend, we had a lot of fun. So, um, for prom, coming up on April 26th at Big Rock Creek. We are, as student council, are kind of just down to the last couple of meetings. We are the last, second to last committee group meeting today. Because next week is the day before we start setting up. So it's, we're kind of counting down the days here, but I think we have a really good plan. The theme is night on the bayou, so our colors are just, I wanna say swampy, because like that doesn't sound very, very good. But it, I mean, you get kind of like those greens, purple, like different.
Pink, roses, and the purple.
Yeah.
Princesses, frogish colors, so.
That's a better.
Yeah. And it'll be from 8 to 11 PM, tickets are on sale now. Um, and yeah, it's always a blast, you know, that's a junior, senior thing, and then if, if brought, sophomores can be brought as well. Um, and then, basically the last thing I have is a couple things. Dates to remember, May 12th, high school spring choir concert. May 19th, high school band concert. And then, sports updates, I haven't been able to go see many. All I know is that boys tennis has been having a good start to the season. I went to the, I went to their first tournament, and they won two of the three, like, matches, I think? So that was good. Uh, girls across, I think they're crushing it actually, I think they're doing very well. Um, track and field seems to be getting into it pretty well. They had a meet in North Branch tonight, so I'll hear about it tomorrow, I'm sure, from a few of my friends. Baseball, I think is good, I haven't heard much about it. Softball, I'll leave to Anika later. And golf also started. And then, the last thing is last week, Lakeside celebrated staff appreciation, I believe. And, we as a council are preparing our staff appreciation papers soon as well. You guys would know more about that than me.
Yeah, yeah.
So they'll say that, but otherwise, thank you. And to all who celebrate, have a great Easter, and those who don't, have a great weekend.
Wow, that was so well put together, how do I follow that? I know he takes all the stuff every time.
It's gross.
I know. I guess it's not just a spring play, um, as, as you know, Community Ed has, this is the second year of Community Ed, it's kind of running it. The first year it was, um, due to high school. So, I definitely, not only do you see like a lot of alums in the community coming back to get involved in the theater program, but you also see a lot of new faces, getting to work with adults and working on more classical gift, um, projects. It's, it's a really unique opportunity. Part of the various extra figures, I'm in, I network a lot with other students, um, from other schools and districts, and so that's definitely, um, a really advocate to support community acting, because sometimes community theater can be very hard to get into if you're a younger age. But, working with older actors is a really valuable experience then. Especially doing classical shows like our town, it brings a lot to the table. Um, in other news, Anika is also involved in this, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna take this from you. Uh, we're all in the speech team, um, which is also widely leading a little early tonight, as we have our season end statement for our speech, um, team. They're a really great season, it's a long season that runs from, honest, I think like end of December to now. Um, and so we had our sections and our conference. Uh, we had a lot of words in conference, and then Anika and I are the two qualifiers from our section, are for our team to go to state. So we will be representing, um, Shisago in our section at the state conference, which is the same as prom, unfortunately.
Oh my goodness!
It, it's always, it's always something, it's always something someone's prom, someone's, yeah. But, I mean, what I get from.
Um, congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um, and then I'm also involved in the Professorials of America, uh, and we had our state musical conference last month, early in March. Right for spring break, which was another crazy turnaround. Um, and we had a lot of success, we got to network with a lot of students. Um, you get to see like, not only the business aspects, but, um, a lot of different people. We have key on speakers, a lot of leadership, um, workshops and all of that. And so I think I meet those other students and talk to them, I also serve, um, our regional board. And so, um, talking about like how we can improve our program and how we've seen it grow in the last years. We've seen an exponential growth from our first student GPA being four people. We now have 16, I think, so, still small, but we'll take what we can get.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have two people, including myself, who placed, um, at state, will be advancing up to the national leadership conference, which is happening May 7th or 11th. Yes.
Very good.
And then, in other news, I just think that, um, as we're getting into more of the spring sports and kind of things are transitioning, I think school culture has definitely lightened up a little bit. I think everyone's getting out of their seasonal depression and getting outside. The sun has been sometimes there, but you know, we'll take what we can get. Yeah, it looks to me a little bit more energized and more involved. And I would say, um, students are definitely responding more to like certain activities and things we planned as well, definitely better. And then, you know what, I'll leave the student council teacher thing for you. And then, yeah, on to the turn.
So this is the one part of the year where I do something that they don't, so I'm so stuck about that. I'm in softball, which you've left for me, is that a bit? I, I'm on the varsity softball team this year, I'm a catcher. So far we've had a really great season, we've only played a couple games, but it's a promising start. Uh, we're, we've got grit, we've got a great team, even considering we haven't all played together as one team. Like, all these people in one team has never really been a thing until this year. So we're, we're still finding our gel, but it's, it's going really well. We had our first class.
Could you tell us about your quote?
Oh, that! My favorite quote is.
She just said the guy.
My favorite quote of Erica so far is, wow, that was a learning curve. So sorry.
It was, it was, yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't even read that. You keep going.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's kind of, we've got some, we currently have a couple people that are gonna go play in college, so they're just having their last hurrah here for the season. And a lot of us are excited to start next year too, so even, we've got a promising year this year, and then next year and the year after, I think. The program's looking really great. Got a tournament this weekend in Nankato, so that'll be fun, they have nice fields. Hopefully we'll secure three wins, but they'll be seeing tougher games, which is great. Yeah, it's still the beginning of the season, so I don't have a whole lot to say about it, but I'm, I'm really excited. I guess, next, I'll talk about student council. So Katie and I, we have the president, co-president. But Katie and I are currently on a committee for student council for teacher appreciation. So coming up soon, we're gonna be doing this thing, it's like an award style presentation for teachers. We had the students vote on the Wally Awards, and we're gonna do a big pet test being like, last time award goes to, and it's gonna be really fun. Senior superlatives, yeah, all the things, so we're really excited about that. We're also kickstarting this year a mental health week, we're really stressing. It's really important to us that we make the school environment aware and a safe space for mental health issues to be observed and respected and listened to. So, we've reached out to Gold Star, we're getting t-shirts, we reached out to Paul from CFTV. Hopefully we can collaborate on the video, we're still working that out, but we're gonna, we're gonna get that up and rolling, and hopefully, we will have district wide shirts. Hopefully, we're still working that out, but Gold Star seems to like the idea. And other news, I have some.
If you wanna thank them, I was gonna talk.
Yes, Claire, she was right. Uh, it's like the end of, this is for choir and band, it's sort of like the end of the year, so we're wrapping up. We just picked out our senior songs for graduation, and we've started the new audition process for next year. So the music program is, like, bringing in the new, the new year too, which is kind of, I guess. I have to remember one more thing, this is my last thing, it's quick, I promise. So as you know, Katie and I are going to state, this is just a fun little fact. We're in the same category for speech, and Shisago Lakes, both of us got first and second. So it was a Shisago Lakes sweep, I just.
Oh my goodness!
Some will plug that a little bit, but yeah, that's it.
And, I would, I have just one more thing. You have a live hang day?
For choir, also. We just had our large group contest. Um, that's basically where we meet up with a bunch of schools, it was at Zimran High School this year. We perform three songs for three judges, and they each rank us out of 40. If you get 35 or above from two or more judges, you get what is called a superior. This year our choir got a 35, a 36, and a 38 from the three judges. So we got superiors across the board this year.
And then, awesome. Well, and I was just thinking that it might be Captain and Dave's last meeting, because you will have graduated by the time we got enough school. Right?
Oh my goodness.
Do you have one on?
No.
Oh, one more, then no speech. Yeah, I'm jumping ahead, we forgot when we went, May.
So they should come from here for the speech?
No, I'm gonna give.
Oh, she should come from here.
Well, thank you so much for the great report. Does anyone have any questions for our student representative? So much going on, so much you guys are involved, it was just great to hear about it all.
So much going on throughout the school, it's, you give us a good sense of energy coming in.
Yeah, we appreciate it very much, and I hope the banquet's wonderful tonight. Yeah, and thanks for being here, we appreciate it. So leave when you need to, if you have a question.
Okay.
Yes, that's a good idea, I wanna go.
Thanks, out of the banquet. We will try. Alright, board committee updates, is there any updates that any of us have submitted in the committee meetings?
You know, I did attend the schools for fair funding.
Yeah.
This is a very long, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pass on, what they went over is they talked about the Senate's plan for education, the House's plan for education, and the Governor's plan for education. Um, and they had a ready, you know, what could possibly happen, and there was a representative of both the Republican and a Democrat that were there. Um, I can pass on those plans if you haven't seen them, although like, you shared one. You shared one. You know, there's a few things that we need to pay attention to. For example, I don't remember if it's the House or the Senate, but one of the teams talking about taking, taking away the inflation that you said, you said on, and promised to whoever, and that's, that's troubling to hear, because that, that is more than like, we're gonna be our only increase with going to state budgets. So that was not pretty here. And then, you know, it was one of the more vocal meetings I've ever heard. Um, because people were trying to talk about the districts and the impacts that some of the legislations had. And they were just really asking to be heard about things like paying for summer employees, um, you know, beating all children, um, they were talking about that. They were talking about needing some flexibility with some of the mandates and some of those things. So it was good, because there were some there from each party, listening to school leaders sort of saying the same things. Like, regardless of party, you need to know how this is impacting our schools. So it was, it was a robust conversation, I'll put it that way. And so it, and it went on, it went long. So, they both said, and I will get you their names, I'm sorry, I can't remember what happened. But they both said they want to hear from, they want to know how this stuff is impacting us. So, um, it was a robust discussion, kind of like robust discussions are happening kind of all across the United States right now. But, it was good, because it gave people a chance to say, your idea might have been good with this thought, but here's how it's playing out in real life for school districts, and so, I don't know, I found it interesting this time.
Did they talk about the funding formula at all? I'm on the executive, we're there, we're meeting with the guy to try to preempt the equitable funding and the formula, you know, we've talked to him, let me, authorities, other things like that. We're gonna meet with a gentleman who deals with this, try to preempt, uh, kind of the issues of the funding formula for equity. We'll meet here next week, and I don't know if they said anything.
No, they, they didn't.
Probably a lot of stuff, so, we're gonna gather next week to do that. Kind of, we have to bring it to the legislation and try to say, here's the problem.
The one point they were both clear on is there's really no money in education. So, don't count on it, is basically what they told us, both sides. So, they may do some tweaking, they may do some things with these mandates, um, but they said do not anticipate the money, if anything, there's a chance we could lose some of the promised money. So, it's a little dismal, I have to say. So that was that, so is any other committee reports?
Um, if you could share that information, whatever you got from the meeting.
Yes, I will.
Let it go.
I will definitely share, and there's a lot, you know, it's, yeah.
In primary news, this grad meeting, it's always my favorite meeting, they spend a lot, the first half's always inspirational. Um, and we had a really good report from the lower students team. So it's the people serving, um, our students with the most unique needs, that usually, you know, have a great bit of these. And just the creativity they bring to problem solving, and so this has kind of been a strange year we're there for them, but it's, it was nice to hear from them. Just hear all the, um, the different ways we're supporting these kids, it was an inspiring moment. Um, and then, in other scrub news, they're really taking a hard look at their budget process too, and trying to be really mindful that the districts are all having our own budget problems, so whatever they can do to keep the budget as minimal as possible, knowing that the needs and behaviors are growing, so that's like the balance, but balance everywhere, so.
It is the balance.
Yeah. Any other committee updates?
Okay, if not, we will move on to the superintendent updates, superintendent needs.
There's a cover for them to show you something today too, so. I'll start with, um, so I'm a member of Rotary, been a Rotarian for a while. We had a great conversation today about mentorship. There's a program through Rotary called Strive. And the program really focuses on how to support kids at really critical, uh, parts of their life to get them over the finish line. And after some conversations in district with our Rotary members, we talked about starting a program with middle school free educators next year in the fall. So I was just excited about the opportunity to talk to our Rotarians. Um, they're very eager to do this piece, and I think anytime we can have positive influence on lives of kids, it's a win for everybody. So, um, we're gonna start looking at, uh, selections, getting people on board, and starting the program next fall. I'll come back and give some updates on this piece too. Just, it's exciting from the perspective, we're again, it's a community group that really cares for our kids. And also I want you to know this ties directly to goal number four, strategic planning, where we talked about altruism and mentorship. And this was one piece, and we found a lot of bandwidth on, that we do, we can do a lot of good work for kids, so. Uh, we had our first soup of the soup. Uh, I didn't know what we'd listen to before last week, that's right, right, last week. And we did the first topic on the bond, I thought it went really well, we had really good attendance, uh, good conversation, discussion. And, uh, excited for the next one. Uh, we're gonna do the date and time, it's gonna be May 21st, 12 o'clock, at the WCC. The topic's gonna be literacy. We're trying to identify topics, we feel like together might be some misnomers out there, so I'm going to really educate people on things. Um, you know, the combat major group I spoke to this week was, we didn't look a lot different, theirs looked a lot different, we were in school. And I'm really excited, because we're gonna go over a little bit of that information, have a couple different activities to walk through, just to get an idea about really what this looks like overall. So, uh, get it, you wanna come to soup with me? Come on down the 21st at 12 o'clock, WCC, should be a good time overall. Uh, the last piece, let me start with this before I show the video. So, one thing we've talked about as a district the last few years is how do we engage, educate, tell our story, and also need information, so we can start changing some of the narratives that might be out there. So I had the pleasure today, one of our strategic planning groups has some of us in the marketing department, they, they work for firm, the cities. And she connected me with a person that we met with today, that's gonna start doing some videos for us, some of the animation ones, on different topics starting next fall. Really excited about that piece, because again, going through, it's been a gatling of needs the last month. Uh, awesome, it's been great talking to our community. But you can tell through the dialogue, conversation, there's a ton of education to do. It's no different anywhere else that I've been, education's a really complicated sort, especially financially. So we're gonna work on that internally and try to have something that rolls on every four to six months, um, to just give people some ideas about how things work. Because I think again, in the minds of people, I know we've all talked about this before, we might understand it, but for a laborer, they have no idea, and then you're sitting there trying to say, okay, here's how this really works. I think we're just gonna try some more outreach in that way, or in the other. On that note though, my association for superintendents, uh, came out the video. I saw it at a conference I attended, uh, this past month. And we are gonna launch this one right after our last bond video. Uh, we have one more, being next week, which we're gonna wrap up on, and then the week after we wanna do this. And the reason I like this is because this is a, a, a first take at trying to unpack school funding people overall, I think they did a really nice job of that piece. So, when you think about and see this video real quick, like I wanna show everybody, we're gonna take deeper steps into this, that will sort of be a branch for them. I just want you to know, that's sort of one of the pieces we really wanna work on, like, I thought, I just wanted to show you guys, and I know some of you already seen this piece, but even for our public, and again, we're looking at after next week's last video for the bond series, we will launch this, so we can. So if you wanna. Just a last piece of that, here, here. You're gonna come and things that we're talking about internally with our staff to educate, to cast that voice for us and foster our community. So you're really like, especially on the three points they brought up, the first two, those are things we're, we're educating people on. I wanna share one last piece, is that we've been meeting our strategic planning groups throughout the last six months. Okay, it's been awesome, really good conversations. Have one of our vocals speak this week, who's number two, which is more on the academic aspect, we've sort of worked it into different conversations. And we had a community member that was in the room and talked about the fact that I really appreciate, because my knowledge of the school district goes around, and he's an engaged person, but he's like, I can now. And he's an engaged person, but he's like, I can now make certain things. I think you wanted us to do that so we have a baseline of when I talk about the schools, I know boom, boom, boom. I talk about funding, I know boom, boom, boom. It was really encouraging to hear that piece. And also I feel like even our meetings throughout the bond campaign, I see a lot more head and eyes than before. We still have work to do. There's still a lot more to do, but we're practicing enough. People are understanding what we're doing, and we'll keep working on this piece to get more of this information out. But I'm encouraged, even though we talked about this is a tough time, it's going to be a tough four years, but I encourage it again, we're getting these messages out that people are starting to understand.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question. Love the idea about the videos. Question I have is, are other school districts kind of talking to each other about kind of working together? Maybe to get some of these videos done, getting this information out? It seems like all of us, the schools, we're all kind of dealing with similar problems. Resources, are those conversations being had or?
I wouldn't say no, but I think that everyone's facing their own challenge at this point. So I think it's tougher to do that piece. But I think the one piece we try to do is, we try to share that information and make sure that we're talking to each other because a lot of stuff they're putting together is extremely impactful to the next district. Especially the one that we're working on right now. It'll be for the fall. It's going to be about our story about financial equity for districts to reach the sun of lakes. And I'm going to try and share that with everyone in the corridor and with seat members or sorry, staff members. All of us, because it's important. And you're right, we just want to get this information out and educate our public.
Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, which includes claims and accounts, personnel, some employment contracts, extracurricular contracts, and then our past meeting minutes. So I'll need a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda.
I still want to make it so they can sit.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions about that at all?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. When I was looking through all the claims this month, I noticed that there was quite a few payments to mechanical contractors. So I asked Robin to just do a casual, quick look back three years. And she noted that we paid almost $400,000 since 2022 to mechanical contractors. Now, obviously, some of that is going to be your boiler maintenance, which will always happen. But a majority of that is going to repairs. And so if the referendum were to pass, we would be able to then put that money elsewhere. So I just wanted to add that.
Oh, that's actually good. No, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Again, same sign, the consent agenda passes. All right, we have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have some donations. We have, Shalit Express and Foundation is giving money for scholarships, a thousand, of a thousand dollars. The Alman Lions Club is giving a $750 scholarship. And Resource Training Solutions is giving a $5,000 innovation grant. So we will need, this will be a resolution, but we'll take a motion to accept the donations first. I'll make a motion to accept the donations. Sarah, can we start with you, please?
Yeah, Sarah, aye.
Jen, aye.
Aye.
And Lori, aye. The donations are accepted, and thanks to those that gave for our kids. We're moving on to the revised budget. Robin, that's the revised budget.
Two, Madam Chair, members of the board, just let me know where you're taking them. Perfect. All right, so as you know, as a board, every year when we create our preliminary budget, we're using estimates. We're using assumptions. A lot of unknowns that we, you know, don't know at the time. So at this time of year, we revise that budget to reflect all those changes. But just keep in mind, we're still using some estimates. They're just better estimates. So for those that are floors there. But a revised budget is an adjusted budget from that original budget that we had and reflects those changes. We've got some unexpected expenses that we didn't know of in last June, some changes in funding, maybe some changes in enrollment, we've had that. And then some contract settlements that we've had that have come in since that original budget was presented. So the first four funds I'm going to talk about are those that are not the general fund. So we've got, this is our preliminary budget that we had for food service, community service, debt service, and then our scholarship fund. And you can see where we were at, at the beginning of that. And what we're doing for the revised budget is we're looking at an increase. In food service, we've got a little bit of an increase in state aid and then some decreases in federal aid. But overall, we've got about a hundred thousand dollar increase in food service revenue. But we've got an increase of about $277,000 in expenses. A lot of that is salaries and benefits, and food and milk prices have gone up quite a bit as well. And then we've got some of the big expenses we already budgeted for, but we're going to show a change in fund balance there of about a negative $200,000. But again, that's planned. We're buying a lot of ovens. And I know Jen, you asked me some of those questions last month. Yep, we bought a lot of ovens, which is good. We need to replace a lot of them. In our community service fund, our revenue is going up about $569,000 with expenses going up about $367,000. So we're looking at more of a break even budget there. So, you know, following those trends, we're, I think we're getting, I think we're getting to that where we need to be in that fund now. Debt service, we've got an increase of revenue of about $100,000 there, and that's interest. Of course, I was being conservative with the original budget, not saying we were going to get as much interest, but we've still gotten quite a bit of interest this year. And then the expenses are pretty stable there. And the scholarship fund, you just approved a few donations for scholarships. So really, the scholarship fund is just a flow-through fund for us. We get that revenue in in scholarships, donations, and we pay them out to the higher ed, to colleges and universities for students that we pay out. So kind of just flowing in and out. And that fund balance really was built up in FY '24, so that's where you're seeing we're spending that fund balance there. So if we look at where our estimated fund balances are going to be at the end of this year, hopefully our estimated, of course, when we look at food service, about $935,000. That is down a little bit from the preliminary budget, which was just over a million. Community eds were showing a little higher fund balance there. We were looking at about $600,000, now $654,000. And our debt service fund is going up a little bit there as well. Scholarship fund, we're going, it's going, it's, we're showing it to go up, but we're actually going to take, we're spending down that fund balance because it was higher than we thought it was going to be at this year.
Robin, can I ask you a question?
I was just going to say, are there any questions after these funds?
So I know that with food service, you're only allowed to carry a certain balance.
Yes.
What is that?
They say it's right now, they're giving us six months of fund balance right now. That's what it's been through COVID and throughout, through this time. They are changing it to three months, but I think it's after next year. We're still fine there, and that's why we're spending it down as well. We've got a healthy fund balance. We want to use it how we can. We've been purchasing the ovens. We've been purchasing some other things. We're also purchasing cafeteria tables, which they didn't, they've never let us do before, so this is a new thing. So we're able to purchase some of those cafeteria tables too. I think Laura's been working with a lot of the principals to be able to purchase some more now, so. We're fine. We're not in that point where they're going to take anything away. And honestly, I never see them taking it in my 30 years.
They just threatened to take her away.
Well, what they'll say is, you need to spend that down for the next 10 years.
And I know there's legislation right now to have more flexibility with what the community for food services monies. So I'm curious to see if that goes.
Right. I know in my organization and probably yours as well, Brian's are really pushing for that just because some districts are really building that up and.
They don't need it right now.
Well, no, and can we spend it on, you know, you know, sprucing up a cafeteria? Because before it was, all you could spend it was on, in the kitchen, nothing in the cafeteria. So they're kind of moving it all a little bit that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these four funds? So the general fund, our change in assumptions there, obviously we had a decrease in enrollment, but we did have an increase in cross, cross-subsie special education aid, which, of course, I was being very conservative at the beginning of this budget as well because we were never quite sure. There's just so many estimates there. And then we did have an increase in expenditures, increasing salaries and benefits, which were some of the contract settlements. Changes in insurance, just different policies with employees changing what they're going to do. And then actual costs, and we just try and bring that budget as close as we can to possible at this time of year. So in our general funds, our preliminary budget was 48,161, changed that revenue to 48,044. So because of that drop in enrollment, we're going to show a little bit of a decrease there in revenue, even with the increase in cross-subtie age. Then on the expense side, we're going to see an increase of about $350,000, most of that being in salaries and benefits, just bringing it closer to actual there. We're still going to see our estimated fund balances. And for us, our fund balance at the end of FY '24 was about $500,000 higher than the estimated. So that's what brought that up to just over that $3 million. We're just seeing a slight change there in our unassigned fund balance, bringing it to about 3.1 million. And our restricted fund balance, we're bringing that down actually. And the restricted fund balance, that's where our LTFM fund balances are, our capital fund balances, our staff development, all of those that have restrictions on it. So just showing that unassigned, because that's what we talk about the most, that unassigned fund balance. We're going to be still about that 6.3% is where we're throwing, showing, you'll see the number is going up a little slightly, about $89,000, and the percent is going down just because our expenditures are going up, so that causes that. Yeah, just a little math in there, you know, where that fun, or that percent is going to go down. I believe that's all I have. All right. Any questions on the general fund then? Not a whole lot of change in the general fund. Like I said, the biggest change was in our community education.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Thanks, Robin. I'm trying to get that just. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the school calendar, believe it or not, for 2027, 2028, because it sounds like our families like having the calendar a few years in advance so they can make that.
I need a motion to approve that budget.
You want us to approve this? Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
We need a motion in the second to accept the revised budget.
Our auditors will ask for that, so.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, the revised budget passes. Thanks, Robin.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the 2027, 2028 school year calendar. And remember, we can always make revisions if we need to as a school, but this is just to get the basic calendar out there. And I know Brian brought it to the superintendent's council to get some feedback. Is there anything else you wanted to say about Brian?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head. It's just not, our parents are making plans ahead of time, so we're trying to beat that in as well. And we're certainly traditional, bringing this to our super council for feedback, so we did that process involved.
Is there anything really different from previous years?
No, and again, I mean, I was sort of, when I think of your last, we talked about, we looked at the last five, 10, 15, 20 years, the summer creatures happened. So it's not that ton of changes, but as Lori mentioned too, if there are adjustments down and going for conferences, different things that might change, just come back and then deal with it later.
Any questions about the calendar?
There's no graduation date. Does that get done later?
Yeah.
Because you'd really like a softball game to be on graduation.
Well, it's right in the middle of the state tournament this year, so.
All right, if no other questions, we need a motion in a second to accept the 27, 28 school year calendar. I'll make a motion to accept the 27, 28 school year calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, the calendar is accepted. All right, now we have to establish election judge pay. It says compensation for election judges for the, whatever.
It's the, it's the.
For the special elections shall be $16 an hour, is that right? For regular judges and $18 an hour for head judges, that number increasing. And it looks like we need to take a, we need to vote on this to accept that pay. And Michelle, how does that work? Like, does the county set that? Do you need set that?
The state sets the pay.
The state. And then pay that's it. Okay. Any other questions about the election judge pay? If not, we need a motion in a second to accept that. I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Again, same sign, the motion passes. Then there's a resolution for election judges because we're holding special one, special election on May 13th. This is something that must be done. Anything else you need to say about this?
No, this just gives us the authority, wanting to have these people at the precincts, and it also gives me the authority to assign somebody if we got into a pinch and needed to quickly train somebody on the slot, you know, election judge day up.
There's actually a list of people who have chosen to be election judges at the very bottom?
We'll say this year, we have more people doing single shifts, whereas like previous years, we had people like wanting to do the full entire day, which is a lot of time, seven to eight, or 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So we got a lot more people just doing like the half day, which just as well. So you'll see more names, but it's the same role across board.
Okay, any questions about the election judges? If not, we need, this is a resolution, so we'll need a motion and then we'll go through a roll call vote. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Sarah will say it. Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye. Brenda, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
And Lori, aye. So the appointing of the election judges passes. All right, we're moving on to the Local 284 contract. And Cory's here. Cory, you have a few comments for us?
Yeah, I just want to give you guys some information about the contract. But I just want to start off by thanking our parent group, Local 284, and of course, the board commissioner, Paul Ginnon, negotiations. It's always a daunting task, but I've worked through it. So we do feel it was a positive experience, expanding our partnership with them, that we're trying to build with them. Just some information about it, the total package percentage is 10.86%. Of course, a lot of that does come from insurance because we bar increased in insurance to the life bar minimums, and they were two years behind on that, so. So that did increase quite a bit. There was also a 4% salary increase in year one, which would cover the current school year, and then going into year two for the next school year was at 2%. We did remove two steps from the beginning of, of this salary schedule. That's just to increase our starting wage to align with our comparables that we've been looking at over the years. We did have a slight increase to longevity, and then one thing I will say is we did go over our budget amount by about $65,000. But we do feel that this year we made the adjustments we needed to make, and we'll also be monitoring from next year just to align with the budget amount that we have. And then again, I just want to thank everyone that was involved and just look forward to working with them through our partnership. So I don't know if the board members are, are they one second thing, but that's all I have.
So Sarah, Josh, and Jeff, both of your board members said, help to appreciate this contract, if anyone wanted to say anything.
It's just, it's nice to see it all put together. There was a lot of back and forth, but it was very productive in the end. And we've got to start replacing things.
Well, thank you for the work that goes into it, because I know it takes work, you know, just to figure out that so both parties are happy. I know, Jeff, what you want to say, you want to say something?
Well, you know, the progress is made, I think, being collaborative. You know, so that they're just a more pleasant process. But I think also, I hope, as we look forward next year, just doing some preemptive meetings and some things like that. I think sometimes like we make great progress when we just get face to face. Instead of coming in, you know, kind of having two sides and working together to get it. So I, I think next year, if we could have that even meeting to sit down with Robin and kind of come up with what things cost. I think that, I'm looking forward to that. It was much better that, this year, I think. And I just think we're going to keep, continue to progress in all of our bargaining here as well. Just to make it a little bit more amicable process, you know. And I think the way that you do that is build relationships, look people in the eye. So I think it's just a good experience, a good process, so. And I had a question. When would Retro?
Well, I mean, we'll discuss that. Our goal, obviously, to start is to get everyone changed to the correct step by the next payroll. And we have a meeting set up to get a lot taken care of and get insurance as possible. And then Retro will follow up.
Any other questions about the contract? If not, we'll need a motion and a second to accept the local.
Madam Chair. I make a motion to accept the Local 284 contract, 24 to 26.
I will second it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Again, same sign, the Local 284 contract is accepted. Next, we have a Local 284 MOU regarding what's time and work year for employees.
Yeah, so during negotiations, we spent a lot of time talking about, there's employees who are working more days than what they're contracted for at this point, and they've always kind of worked to deal out with flex time, and instead of putting something into the contract, what we decided to do is just meet with them and as a, making a decision as a district, we'd rather just pay them for the days they're here than to try to make all these deals and keep track of it. So we, all this is agreeing to is we'll meet with the, with the union to, to have a discussion around what the work year looks like for individuals that could.
Is there any questions? If not, we need a motion in a second to accept this MOU, the Local 284. I'll make a motion, I'll second it. For the motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, that motion passes. Cory, are you just kidding?
Yeah, don't worry.
All right, so now we have a resolution for non-renewal educational teacher. Are you guys okay?
So we did a resolution like this at the last board meeting, this one was just another individual who we knew was coming in just at the time we did work out from the last board meeting, so it's just on this board meeting, person we wish to know that it would be numbered, so.
Okay, so.
Just an exception, yeah.
Yeah, because I thought I remembered us doing that last time. Okay, oh, and it's a resolution. So we need a motion in a second to accept this non-renewal educational teacher, and then I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Sarah, aye.
Josh, aye. Brendan, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jen, aye.
And Lori, aye. Motion passes. Next, we have a preschool MOU. If you want to speak to that.
Yeah, I probably won't say as much as I say on other contracts. Two years ago, legislation stated that preschool teachers should be part of the Clem contract. This was just the process of getting them in there. With negotiations with Clem coming up this summer, it was really just, it's something sort of part of it. There wasn't a ton of changes to what they were being offered, but they were already being offered throughout the year, and then we'll do a more broad look at it when we get into the Clem negotiations this summer.
Any questions about the preschool MOU? So they'll be entering into the Clem contract.
Yep.
I, no, we got last a gift before we came there from Bridges Gall, who's been a preschool teacher for a long time, and I think they're really excited to be part of it, and looking forward to be part of that, and we kind of made whole a little bit, you know, with being recognized as certified teaching in that area, and I know we're doing some work, they're getting, so we're getting different, some different degrees, and getting that taken care of too, so I just, I think it helps, I think, over a lot of years, you know, even sometimes we say, when we talk about things, we say, you know, K through 12, this is a K through 12 school, well, we kind of neglect the pre-K 312 school, and it becomes kind of a sensitive thing sometimes, where they're kind of like this Highland preschool, pre-K, and I saw pre-K. John will end that sometime, it's kind of fun, I just been in here a couple weeks, it was kind of fun, but I know that they're excited about being part of it, I'm still in there, they said a lot of things to you two, and they're looking forward to be a part of that, and finally come into fruition.
Very good. Any other questions about it? Okay, if not, we need a motion in a second to accept that.
I make a motion to accept the preschool.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, that motion passes. Now, we're gonna be adding some school board listening sessions, and so.
I'll open it up with that.
Okay, so obviously, this was an idea that you guys have been discussing for a while through this strategic plan as well, and this kind of landed on goal number five, the strategic plan, which is the goal that Madam Chair, so through the process, you know, obviously, our goal is, goal number five is to engage families and community members, and they really felt they wanted a listening session, so we came up with a process to feedback, and I know, Jen, you had provided a lot of feedback for us as well, from the community members that are on the strategic plan and from the board members, all of that is reflected in the school board listening session document that we have. I believe you guys all have seen a copy of it at this point, and really, you know, from the strategic plan, they did review it, and they were happy with it, what they wanted out of it is just, let's run through a review, and then meet back up and see how it went, and see what challenges we're facing, and what successes we're having. So with that, with the procedures in there, and just whatever Brian wants to add, if you get any questions about it.
Yeah, the only thing to add is, again, it was a good process, I appreciate, we talked about this early in the year up here, and you guys did want to get back, we incorporated that in, and I think we've probably seen that in your review of this a couple times since that point, but yeah, we'll launch here in May, that's gonna be every other month, and ready to rock and roll.
And so we will need to choose two school board members who will be managing the listening sessions. I think it might be easier just to do by email, where people can sign up for the dates, instead of us sitting here with our calendars, trying to figure out, and we're doing every other month.
Correct, start with the next, all that ones.
On course. So we'll get an email from district office, or me at some point, saying, sign up for dates that work, and so on. And I like that we put parameters in place so that we kind of know what the topic certainly be, and, but it does give the public an opportunity to talk to us in a way other than coming and speaking at a big board meeting, which is sometimes a little daunting for people, or if their topic doesn't happen to be on our agenda, they have no way to talk to us, so we'll see what, how it goes, and I think it's good. We'll try it out, see how it goes. So watch for an email on the dates for that. Okay, if there's nothing further, we need a motion in second, which I'm. We have a motion, we have a second, or is there someone on a stage? Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're at the meeting, and the chair.
You guys, something just, you have approval, or?